Little bit more.
Depends on how I think that is. You know. I don't know like to not be able to.
I look at the needle so I got in some place where I could see everything.
Yeah.
And go back.
Right, right.
Did we give a name for a while?
Oh, we should.
Is that even a whole board agenda? I don't want to name it. Okay. All right, let's add a quick time.
We're not one.
I can tag out one. All right, six thirty. All right. If I mess anything up in person, don't hesitate to call me out. Hello, good evening, everyone. It is six thirty-one on June fourteenth. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. So maybe later. Um, all right, so for our first order of business back in person. Also, welcome to all of our guests who are on. Well, that comes later, but that's okay. Who are on Zoom. I'm really excited to just see how these new owl cameras are working for us. So please definitely let us know for those that are in the Zoom. So we will start with a flag salute and a pleasurable region. So please go ahead and stand. All right, so quick roll call. Maybe let's just kind of start at this end and we'll go down. Yeah, you know, I'm. That's right. I'm Jan. Area Director. Carly Hoover from Elstacy, we're in the District One.
Hey, Martin.
And we also have your course, our superintendent. All right, so again, welcome guests. Thanks for being here in person for our first in-person meeting back. Nice to see some faces. I'm really excited to be here. It's great when it's moving along. All right. Good meeting, good meeting. Um, so, uh, please bear with us as we're kind of get back into the swing of in-person things. So if you haven't yet signed in and you're here, please do so in the back. There's also a copy of our board operating agreement that's back there as well. If you're curious to put those up and, you know, help us hold ourselves accountable for making sure that we are following those. And kind of a part of that, we have, of course, start our meetings with recognizing our group agreements, kind of us centered around those courageous conversations. So those four are stay engaged, experience discomfort and be vulnerable, speak your truth, and expect and accept non-veteran. And of course, we wanted to take a moment to to recognize and honor the land of the first people of Duwamish here that we in Tukula. So sorry, we in the Tukula School District acknowledge that the land that we teach, collaborate, learn, and play is the traditional land of the first people of Seattle, the Duwamish and Mokushu people, past and present, and honor with gratitude the land itself and the Duwamish and Mokushu tribes. As a public school district, we have the responsibility for the stewardship of this land, and we recognize the Duwamish and Mokushu people who have been living here and working here since time. All right, so for our approval of the agenda, I'll accept a motion. All right, there's been a group and second or motion and seconded. All in favor, say aye. All right, agenda stands approved as presented. Um, so we will now open it up for public comment. So since we are back in person, there are several different ways that you can do provide public comments. Of course, as always, you're welcome to submit a public comment by noon on the day of our board meeting. You can do that online or by sending it to the email address, which is also online on our website. Also, you can provide Zoom or live public comment via Zoom or in person. To do it via Zoom, you may raise your hand using that feature in Zoom or type your name into the chat, and we will get you on the list. And if you're in person and would like to give a public comment, what is the process for that? There's a sign sheet in the back. And as far as I'm aware, we have received no public comment written. We have no sign or sign up or in-person public comment. Do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to?
I don't see any names in chat. I don't see any hands raised.
Beautiful, as always, we will have an opportunity for additional public comments near the end of our meeting if there's anything that has come up during our time. So with that, I will hand it over to our Dr. Herman for recent equity update.
Thank you so much. So I'm hoping that I am coming through well, even speaking through the math. So thank you for the task that I'll set them. And I'm not going to get feedback about that in any time that I'm speaking. So, uh, racing equity updates. We're actually working on two positions that we're pretty excited about. One is a toaster position, so that's the teacher on special firing that we have posting for that is going to be working with staff directly in the classroom. So this person with will be able to help out with lesson plans and possibly manage one of the friends that we're seeing directly in the classroom. So that's posting that's going up. That was one of the items that we were doing, some of the back on is getting some assistance with staff in the classroom. We've heard that from those students and that, so sort of that we have to that. And the other is an additional position that will help with ongoing professional development and coordination of the kind of teams too. Again, working both with central office, but also directly in the young buildings. The first one was they help design a guy and work with the resident equity teams into the building. So that's what both of those two positions, so those will be new. Right now, we're looking at need for those who are extra dollars for startup. And then we can, we know we have two years of those. And then we can kind of see the additional resources and modules that have to get. So there are two pretty exciting positions that I'm hoping we'll have after I give them back. We also are getting the additional feedback from the strategic planning process that we've been going through the last couple of months. That will be coming to the board for a first look at the next board meeting. I mean, with the facilitators on stage later this week for the information presentation. So and then we'll give that to the board and the rest of the people getting stuff before the next one. But I think some.
One second, we just had a hint hardly hear you.
Okay. Can try it with the.
I just turned up the speaker.
Okay.
So try it again.
Well, try it just like this.
Okay.
So we have some additional feedback from the last summit session that we had around strategic planning. So that'll be coming to the board at the next board meeting two weeks from June. And then also, we've got some continued work to do on our SRO items. We had a meeting last week too with kind of the same summit kind of idea about bringing in all these stakeholders. So at that particular meeting, we've received additional feedback. One of the processes that the facilitators had suggested was is what is called a learning lab, which would be pretty similar to what former director of the board had referred to as like a wisdom example, is what that's pulling in staff, parents, students, and working on what language my password would look like or if there are ways to move. They do also have a grant that actually would pay everybody for their participation. So additionally, we've got talked about putting out a survey one more time. The last survey we did was two years ago. So this will be getting fresh information, taking all the feedback from that and then seeing if there's some sort of agreement we might be able to get to. But, you know, it's going to require input from our students and our parents and that. So that's a key piece to that. And right now, that seems to be, there'll be more information coming out about that tomorrow. So it would require some work over the summer, but not that time. So about eight to ten hours of meeting over the summer. And the pay will be very consistent. So personal books, it can mean a couple of hundred dollars, which is very. And this won't be any gift cards like we did last time. So we did, I did talk to the facilitators and they said they they would actually have a way to pay. Let's see, anyone else in the resume updates? We continue to look at some of the positions that we have posted. So we're decided to make sure that we are looking at the first tools and, you know, looking at positions. So we continue with human resources and we've been trying to look at the screening teams. So that's what I have to do.
What does, um, what does the applicant pool look like? A lot of these positions are getting a lot of applicants?
It varies on the position. Yeah, so sometimes we do. Some positions are really challenging. There are a couple of articles that we already know about. Typically, you know, math science, special education, and the post in positions as well. But we're trying to make sure we've got kind of a pool of applicants that will work there because those positions open up I wouldn't say on a frequent basis, but enough spread out between the different states. And, you know, we're not the only ones still on a lot of these positions. When I talk to my colleagues in the area, I mean, there's a lot of, there are lots of different positions. So, you know, I think people are reassessing some of their financial situations, how far away they are. Political ideology, there's all. Yes. Yeah, so we coordinated that. And the idea behind that is to have all that aligned with our strategic plan as well. So this is just trying to get everything into.
Yeah, those are really exciting.
Yeah, we have also, I also had a conversation with people saying ESD last week about the third year of partnership with them and shared these two positions. They thought that's exactly the right track we've been taking. And then decided to meet up with us again in August as we get ready. Plan for the new year and everybody having to build a calendar out of the whole year ongoing.
And the. Better roller deck. Can you speak up? I can't hear you at all. Um, is it Mr. Sample? Who's our first person?
Yes, there's a Mr. Sample.
Would these be working with Mr. Sample and identifying? The classrooms and so?
Probably somewhat working in tandem with them. Yeah, I mean, so, you know, the goal is to please to meet some of the needs that we see and also requests that we have.
So that, um, that toaster position, is that that's one position?
Yes.
So the secondary everywhere?
Yeah, so we're going to see just kind of what the needs are that we're running up against them this year. And then we'll assess this, we're moving to that year to see what we might expect.
So what's the particular, you said they're working in the classroom style?
Yes. Depends on what the needs are. It could be classroom management, it could be lesson discipline, it could be assessments. I think there's a variety of ways that that person helps.
It's like a big job description.
It is.
For an individual. And it also feels like we're setting that person up to be really stretched, buried in because we know of issues that are currently happening, right? And so that's great that we're creating a position, we're excited about that, but it's not enough. And, you know, one person is not going to be able to really create the the system wide support that we need in our classrooms. So I hope this is just like literally the first step.
Yeah.
In more supports to come and not just people supports, right? It's structural supports, policy supports, actual implementation of those things, and repeating these. Um, question around the strategic planning process. So in your extension email about, I found out that elementary students were not included in the strategic planning process. I'm curious what is now being put in place to make sure we get those voices. And why was that not in the original thing?
Uh, so I think originally the feedback we had just was that the planning of inviting policies that went behind the field to follow those levels. So we have gone to two classrooms, got feedback from elementary students last week.
So the the plan, when devising the plan, it was either getting all the entire student body together at once? Or or not like?
Yeah, I think the way we did the strategic planning was an invite to students in general. So, yeah, we probably should have done all of them this year wide and then go on the show. But actually, I think this process potentially going into the middle classes available in the middle. We're pretty well going to do that.
How did we solve this question?
Mr. Don helped.
So it didn't include a question in the school? At each of the elementary, so which elementary did you?
Tukula Elementary.
Um, I think that it was really important that we made sure that we get input from elementary students at all elementary schools. So if we could please include that before we get that report in two weeks, that would be great.
Okay, that'll be a bit of a challenge, but yeah. We'll invite elementary students.
I mean, I guess, I mean, the reality is now it's unfortunate because what the last day school is on Thursday. And I don't know, I don't feel comfortable moving forward with the strategic plan that didn't include important voices in our fifth grade students.
Yeah, I think when you see the feedback that we have, it's not going to be dissimilar from other student feedback that we have. And again, it's not to negate that we couldn't get additional insight from other folks, but I actually think we have probably more elementary feedback student voices than we had on secondary just from doing that. So, yeah, I mean, again, we can put out an invite for elementary students to try to participate. And we'll see what we can get. But my guess is the feedback we have is pretty small.
I think it's going to be hard now for sure. I mean, I think this this came up in the SRO summit the other day around whose whose feedback are we really getting, right? Who's input are we getting? And is it is it widely reflective of all the different communities, right? And the reality is if we go to one school, there's no way that we can realistically say that the information that you got from that one school can be represented by the other people that has given you. So, um, yeah, I still think that, yeah. So we, yeah, we that. And so with the SRO conversation, I'm glad that we're moving forward to do a more another push for some individual input and creating some of those tables. Because I definitely had the same feelings about just not really getting, not getting input from everyone. That every school said we need.
Yep, I agree.
There are questions? Once again. Language becomes a challenge. I know we work really hard to get interpretation for the adult groups, but I don't know if we got any of the kid groups. Or how you. Decide to take that.
Well, look at it and see what we can do. What are the next?
I'll just, I think, again, state that out loud. I think this was an opportunity where now here we are tuning with school and they needing this input when you've been working on a strategic plan and in theory, we're supposed to have a process for community input that we didn't get. And so now we're, you know, we're put in this, I feel like we're in a position through the plan and it's not ready and not full. There are no other questions about the race that we have to.
Thanks for coming back to you. Again, we continue to take a look at what's happening with our rates in the county. And as a quote specific, they continue to just kind of inch up. I mean, as I look at the data for this bigger little grant, it's a little bit different than others in that, you know, with auto drivers, kind of a quick up and then a quick fall. This one is a much more critical increase. Our rates that we're looking at, I think we got about seven or eight staff out district wide. And I think about twelve or so students that are out. So King County Department of Health did some updates last week, not really about any additional mitigation, but just a couple of things that continues to take a look at. So even though our school year is ending, we will have some students starting at the end of June. So we'll make sure that all of those mitigation strategies and things that we're looking for are also best served as control. And then we do have a vaccination clinic that will be available July seventh. Currently, that's for five and older. But like I think we've been, I've been saying, there's probably a month or two at least because that's what's always out there is we think that under five-year-olds are a couple of weeks away. So they keep saying that, it keeps getting pushed. So we'll see, the provider that we're working with would have the capacity to be able to include under five-year-olds. That's not the case with all providers. So in this particular biggest star provider would have that capacity. Yeah, so if they get that clearance, then then we can include the under five-year-olds in twenty five seven.
And then we do boosters for the kids that.
Yes.
As well as.
Correct. Yes. And then as far as, you know, whatever goes on the fall, I'm not quite sure. It's hard to say what's going to happen. So I can't promise, I'll stay that far ahead. But suffice to say, you know, we're keeping up with whatever the latest strategies, mitigation strategies, and guidance from the Department of Health.
Did we, did we have to recycle a lot of test kits that inspired or?
Not that I know of. We kept an okay amount based on the number that we were using, but not an excessive amount that we would just keep it and then not using. So I think we did whenever we had them come in, we used the ones that were, yeah, still good, not expired. But still okay. So each week, I think, to send ESD was the one who was promoting the test kit. But about a month ago, it was back to ordering the room. I think it was Washington State Department. They had their supply chain issues back in January, which is why they shipped it out to the. In San Diego.
And I'm sorry, the summer school will have the same kind of support for COVID.
Yeah, so we have the most, they have, you know, continued support students, so we'll have. We'll have the same mitigation strategies.
So the quarantine specialists and specialists.
I think we will look and see how we're supporting students online, yes. So we'll see.
Well, they're they're refreshing, right?
Yes. I think everybody's in person.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, but we'll have.
Just like we have.
We'll have those.
Well, that's.
Yeah, you said online.
Oh, did I say online?
Yeah. Yeah.
I didn't mean to say.
Specialists will be here for the summer.
We'll have people who can support the students, yeah.
Is it not the quarantine specials, someone different?
There is quarantine special, yeah, but we probably will make sure we have enough to support the students if they do allow, probably won't have five of them. So we'll just, yeah, we'll have.
Yeah. Sorry, since I was first in court, especially you said seven, I just wanted to make sure we're in line, in line of order. Okay. Great. And then I think for me, you know, just in preparation for the fall, I know hopefully there will be a lot less things that we have to think about, but, you know, really want to make sure that we are being proactive in, you know, coming back in the fall. So, you know, definitely want to make sure that we have a really solid detailed plan. Of course, knowing that it may be flexible, but, you know, by July and then, of course, in August, so that we can really make sure that we're communicating where those things are, what those supports will look like as we come back in September. I'm sorry, one more question for you. Maybe this is maybe Michael Floyd or who, but so we have kids in summer school that we have our staff. Well, we also have our programs coming in from other places, to run the after-school kind of things. Will they have the same navigation services, the same?
I can't, I can't see the other programs that might be on site, but I think.
Yeah, we probably need to ensure that that same stuff is available. From what I understand, most of the guidelines around COVID and after-school programs are actually more stringent than the school districts. So my guess is that they're going to be. Probably will love the. Okay, for another COVID nineteen related questions. Then we'll also make consent agenda, so who love the minutes from May twenty fourth? And the who will be once? All in favor, say aye. All right, stands approved. There are no items for discussion, and so we'll move to the questions on the presentation. So this, we had the opportunity to submit some questions ahead of the board meeting. And so we'll just kind of ask if there are any additional questions on these items.
Yeah. So the first one, we just want to go down the list. Chronic absenteeism issue, I'm just, that one. So obviously, there is a big issue there. I mean, there was, we had, we were working on that on absenteeism before, and this just, I know it made it worse. And so there's a whole, and there's presentations, there's all different ideas. And I'm just wondering, you know, are we going to develop, you know, some kind of plan that, for, you know?
Yes, I mean, that the point of trying to get down to kind of whatever concerns, how we prioritize them, what are some possibilities of responding to what we need to do. So in the areas of improvement, as I see in that area, that's, you know, those are the whole that practices that I said, at least are being pointed out. So for us, the MPSF team to make sure we've got different level response. We basically don't need one thousand. Improving that, you know, they would assume that one, another day, one, you want to make sure. So part of this to me is also figuring out from the, from that level, are we actually implementing it? So what I don't have on all these are kind of what are the actual metrics? Go through that. So that's why I'd be working with Kathy and Chief Academy of Health to figure out what we've got going on to respond to that and then allocate resources to play.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, for a while, we've had, it seems to me that stuff like this potentially significant overlap between an MPSF team and the care, we've got care teams in buildings for a long time. And it sounds to me, I mean, their, my understanding of their mission was to essentially put together this multi-tier support system. Now, they may have focused on, and they're saying like the tier three students or something. And that's the key to the modesty is, I, you know, all throughout the system. So maybe, yeah, just be curious to see how the, if we're going to form some new MPSF team or whether we're going to take the care teams and expand their role, you know, it is. Yeah, it would be, I think, just generally before school starts, it would be good to have, you know, this kind of idea of what's, how we're approaching all this. how we're approaching all this stuff. Cause it sounds like, from what they're saying, at least some of the absenteeism, I mean, of course, trying to get to the root cause of what the absenteeism is of this and obviously some of it's related to COVID and, and families being reluctant to stand. And how much of it's that versus, and we, even before COVID, we had a underlying absenteeism problem that we were getting with. So anyway, yeah, that's, I guess that's my only comment is to be, to be like, they all just kind of the plan about how we're doing for the fall.
Another thing she mentioned, the attendance reports and how they're, she let us see this post created team who can work with this collectively. How we consider that?
Yeah, I, I think part of that is deciding who their team will be and use of the buildings. So I think having that identified that he will be, you know, part of it is rather than just saying, you know, what development we need. Name the people on the thing, you know, to know, need to work in for each of that. Now, to me, that's another issue.
Yeah, cause I mean, we've had attendance pushed it before, but there's been publicity around it, you know, and bad though. All of that work seems like it's gonna be pulled into one big thing.
And, you know, I keep wanting to get that community group together to do, what, what does C V be? Yeah, C V B. So I, I did the training for it. I want to make it happen. I got sidetracked. But hopefully before fall, we'll get some folks back in the model with that. Yeah. So that's another way to help out with that.
I think that's just something I'd like to add to our list of things to follow back up on specifically around, well, pretty much all of it. You know, I think, you know, when I, when we got the question back, I think I was a little bit disappointed to see, you know. So there's a series of questions on, sorry. Page five, I know the building all have it, but on page five of this. And when asked if these questions have been answered or thought through, the response was, well, I'm not really sure what the district has done. So I guess a question for you is how are those questions that are there on, on page five? The version of your values around attendance, do we try to overturn and reinforce it? What are our students' current values? Maybe the school attendance and a few more. What, what, how would you respond around kind of what our district is doing to address those questions at the district level and the building level?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is where you walk upon the line of prioritizing and enforcing. So I think when you put that last piece around, review the twenty day, I mean, roll, roll. So this is on the actual piece on there, like that's a strategy that places use. But that feels more punitive than anything else. Cannot also be used to punitive. So it's kind of got a little bit here of both. Things that are supportive to students as well as things that have a little bit of a life to them, but aren't too good. So, and I think first, part of that is getting down to the reasons why students may not be attending. So if they're not attending, it's figuring that out. But to me, that then gets back to the communication with students and families about that they're attending. So.
And is that happening?
I think there's some level of that, but I don't know how much analysis is actually happening for those reasons. And then kind of putting that together and saying, okay, here's a good strategy for students who, you know, are not motivated. Who have the motivation, but they have academic challenges. So they're not showing up, not because they're not motivated. Because they're just concerned about the academic pressure. So I think again, that goes down to how does each building see that and how can we then secure each of the buildings and so that gets back to the teams identifying who are people on these teams and then figuring out how to please the work that they view as important. So.
So I should take one of these questions then. Have we communicated our expectations about attendance? And open the dialogue between students and parents, the school and district bodies?
I think there is a communication out about the importance of attendance. But again, the ongoing dialogue between that and the school and one of the districts. I'm not sure about that in every school. I think to some level there is. And I think usually that gets addressed by trying to do that during like the student teacher conferences. And again, here are different times of the year where you can review, hey, we go about absences. Or, you know, from the household, we have a scene, their student in class, so, you know, is there anything we can do to help with that? But I think for, for us, then that's coordinated on the central office and we got friends in which the building. So I wouldn't say we've done that yet, or at least not done.
But it definitely adds that to our list of things that we want to see on an ongoing basis.
I'm sure the talk will be done.
And then this question here, when can we expect to see a comprehensive district, system level district plan? Where are you at with really formalizing and thinking through and putting that district-wide system level plan together?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's something we're looking at in this area. Again, trying to align it with anything with my cabinet of strategic plan. And then getting ready to help support anything that needs to be started in the school. So I'd say for the summer, in August, as we identify systems and support it now, go into the new school.
Any other questions on this one?
So marking down.
Yeah, 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 of course.
So the next one is the addressing academic acceleration. Well, then when I'm, I'm curious about the about the math program. So, yeah, my understanding is, you know, pre-algebra classes were eliminated on the basis of, you know, inequitable access to students. The question is, in my mind is if. And so everybody's getting placed in double one. Yeah, just interested in a little more, a little more detail on, you know, is, is there evidence that that approach? Is that for you, looking for students? I mean, the fact that math is something that, you know, you are where you are. And, you know, to get up to, you know, everything builds on itself. And so yeah, I, I just, you know, wondering how that, how that approach is, is working. Cause it seems like those classes in the past have worked pretty well, getting students up to the level and putting everybody in the same class, then, you know. Yeah, I'm, I'm curious how that's being supported to be accepted because you got too wide a spread of skills. That's particularly in this particular subject area, that seems really hard to support. I'm wondering, do we have any, so that's been going on, I guess, pretty here now? So do we have any data that does actually include students that come in now?
I believe Mr. Howard and Blind is online.
Good afternoon, Board Directors and Dr. Herndon. It's really hard to hear. So I, I can't hear the question. I, I just know it's about math, but I, I can't hear hardly anything that's being said.
Where exactly is the microphone there or there? As Mr. Howard, is this better?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, good. So the question about math was about the, the algebra and elimination of the pre-algebra courses. And the, you know, putting everybody into the essentially algebra one. And the question is related to, do we have evidence that that, that approach is, is working in terms of student outcomes for math? Because, I mean, the pre-algebra course, that my understanding has been in existence for a number of years. And at least in some of those years, you know, it produced, you know, kind of effective results for students. So, yeah, that's, that's my question. Does this switch actually improve student outcomes in math?
Okay, thank you for the question. Couple of things we took a look at. We looked back at data for the past seven years. We took a look at a grant that we've received from GEAR Up. And as we looked at the grant from GEAR Up, sixth, seventh and eighth grade, eighth grade started using Avid strategies. When they got to ninth and tenth grade, four hundred and thirty-nine of our students were supposed to be taking an advanced course. And that's what we said we would, we would be doing with our students. Those students also receive tutoring, they receive counseling, so they can take a course at the grade level. Those students were placed in a remedial course, which is again, another seventh and eighth grade class back as they got in ninth grade. And then, and when they got to tenth grade, the students were taking the second part of the same remedial class that they already had in seventh and eighth grade. Based off the data that we saw, we saw two conflicting pieces of information. Number one, English played a big version of that. And number two, students had it, were struggling to get support. Since then, Mr. Blind has come on board. We've done a couple of things. We've analyzed that data. And as we're going forward into next year, we are doing a couple of things. Number one, we're hiring a E O L certificated math teacher who's going to be able to work with the students individually. We have also put on, put in place an additional math teacher to lower the class size. So instead of having twenty-six in a class, students are gonna go down to thirteen, fourteen kids in a classroom. The third piece that we're doing is, we hope to build it back, but right now, we cannot do this. We're going to actually take the special ed students who have been placed inside of the remedial courses and place them cognitively where they are actually, their ability is. So if they're functioning at fourth, fifth or sixth grade, they will be taught at that level. And that will be written into their I E Ps and they will get a modified grade. So those are interventions that we're putting in place along with after school tutoring, along with supports. And taking a look at the standards over the last seven years, our students haven't met and providing professional development for our teachers in those areas. So, you know, as we look at those one, two, three steps, that's, that's huge in one year to make that big of a change. To try to move forward, to give our students what they need. But we're committed to making sure students have the best opportunity to get to grade level. Research shows that exposing students to cognitively, who actually can actually understand. Which English can be a barrier, but most of the students can actually work around that. And students will be successful moving forward. So that's what we're, we're planning on doing as a plan. And I believe Mr. Blind's on here as well. He can add some more detail to it. I'm speaking at, from it, from a district level. And then Mr. Blind can talk about it from boots on the ground, from a more practical level, what that looks like in his classrooms for next year.
You all hearing? Hey, good evening, everybody. Yeah, Mr. Howard covered a lot of our plans for this coming year to support our students and math. It's particularly an algebra one course with algebra one, excuse me, with the algebra foundations course. Again, we weren't, we weren't seeing the progress of our students being able to get to that next level in the math courses. And we saw that it's holding them back overall on their opportunities in life. But for next year, again, we're gonna be doing, I think, one thing that Mr. Howard left out, we're doing some co-planning with our algebra one teachers who will have a separate period to do co-planning and to do, be able to build weird strategies to reach our students there. Is there a question?
Yeah, no, that sounds great. All the, all the information you provided is really good. So I'm really looking forward to then seeing, you know, some of the, hopefully you can share some of the data with us about, you know, how it was the two months and so on, and then how it is, you know, once these things have been, been fully implemented. So.
Yeah, absolutely. This year was definitely not the best in trying to incorporate the algebra one for all. Admittedly, we have strategies in place now that we're gonna be working towards next year. And I'm feeling confident about that for next school year and how they'll impact our students.
Yeah, all those, all those things that you outlined and the power lines, yeah, it would make sense. So that's good. Thank.
I would, I would also add that I think anytime we start to move something forward, this brand new it's gonna take time to ramp up. And that's one of the reasons why we have the common prep. The other thing is, we're gonna be working with Puget Sound E S D. And we're also starting to go through a pilot of math adoption. And so we also understand that our math that we are currently have adopted is not at standard. And so we're moving a lot in one year, but please give us time to ramp up. You know, it takes time to rebuild and build and support our, our teachers in these new strategies. So we've learned a lot from the past seven years of having remedial courses at the high school level. But at the same time, some of the things that we're undoing, it's gonna take time to build capacity with it. So just wanted to be clear about that data. And we have all sorts of data for you to look at. I can provide that to you guys at a later date of how students have been doing over the past seven years and what standards we have not met over the past seven years. So I'll provide that to you guys at a, a later date, if that's okay.
I was wondering, did the math instructors at the high school have, and put into this? Solution, the solution?
We, we've met with the department heads and Mr. Blind can add to it. We met with the department heads. And at this juncture, part of this input that they've had is, was to go backwards and continue to remediation courses. That's what a letter they've written to us and written to Dr. Herndon and to the board to continue the remediation courses. That was their input. Since then, we have heard their input. And at the same time, our job is to continue to look at moving students forward and, and what's best for students and all students to make sure they're challenged. And so we've done the interventions that we put in place, lowered the class size from twenty-six to thirteen or fourteen to help them and removing the special needs students and E S L students out of the classroom. So they can actually have more time and a common planning time to actually address some of the areas of concern. But continuing to offer seventh and eighth grade class for the, for the past seven years at the high school level is not getting us to close the achievement gap. So we heard their input. At the same time, we needed to do what was best for students and do a balance. And so the interventions that we put in place along with the strategies that we're doing, we, we believe this is giving our students the best foot forward in life.
And will the students have our opportunity to take elective, yeah?
This will, this will allow our students, once they start taking algebra, they will have, that will free up courses for them to be able to take some of the C T and other courses they want to take. Right now, the remediate remediation courses counted as electives. They didn't count for math. And so we had a lot of students, and we have the data on that, how many students were actually passing and getting their graduation diploma through alternate means. And we want to make sure they have, when they come out of Tuck Willa, it's a Tuck Willa strong diploma. And students have the credentials to be able to not only go to a two-year, but be able to go to a four-year college. And so we want to be able to give students the best opportunity to have a plethora of options for them as they look at life and not be pushed into one avenue, which we've done that to some of our students. We have, we marginalized some of our students into a pathway and we don't want to do that and continue to do that. Mr. Blind, would you add anything?
No, just that we had frequent conversations. You asked about the, the staff inputs with that. We had frequent conversations throughout the math departments, excuse me, with, with the math departments. Got plenty of inputs, but I think it just came down to, we weren't seeing eye to eye necessarily with, well, the individuals within the department that felt strongly about this. And so we had to move forward with it.
Okay, sorry. We had a brief technical thing. You can hear us now.
Yeah.
Mr. Blind or, or Mr. Howard, we heard all that you said. We just want to make sure that we are unmuted now.
Yeah.
We can hear you.
Okay, okay, great. Derek Lawrence, did you have another question or?
No, I just, I just wanted to confirm what, I think. No, I just, I just wanted to uh confirm what, what I think. Pointed out was that I did notice in the data, the CP or the graduation pathways. For math, uh, there's a lot more students getting their math um uh graduation requirement filled out through CP courses. Then there's this big jump in the last year. So giving, giving students more options is, is definitely a really good thing. That's, and that part of it's, I think, working well.
Um, so there were two questions that were asked here. Um, uh, and you know, uh, were answered. Well, but I think it's more now a, a question for like how we could provide district support. So. Like what other smaller interventions or strategies that we could employ to really support mental health um within the schools? Um, and you know, the idea of affinity groups, community circles, branding practices, those types of things. Um, uh, and I wonder if there's possibility to really explore uh over the summer. An organization or working in some partnership to bring someone in to facilitate some of that work rather than just brewing PD opportunities. And then expecting our staff to facilitate those opportunities. Um, there are many, many organizations that are doing really great work around that. Um, a lot of uh organizations with uh, you know, that are really steeped in racial equity work as well that are doing that. So I think that would be a really valuable. Way to, to s- to build a more proactive level support for our students. Um, that also doesn't put more and more work on teachers.
Yeah, the athletics. Um, first of all, it's great to see all the um. Uh, the programs starting up again and the students, you know, making the all-day things and all different sports and everything like that is um. Great to see that going again. Uh, so compliments to all the athletic staff on that one. Um, I, this may be a question for Veronica, I guess. I'm curious about, so. You know, as part of the bond, we invested a lot and put a whole pool of facilities in athletic facilities around and. Um, I see a lot of uh different groups coming in and using them. I'm just. Uh, the question was, you know, are we getting significant new revenue coming into the distribution from those new athletic facilities? And so. I see the question goes so far that you have forty-five thousand. Um, the revenue is going to. Um, the capital projects fund presumably for maintaining the, maintaining the facilities. I guess I. I guess the question is already, are we getting enough new revenue to at some point to be able to start using that for some other purposes or is it? The, the amount where. I guess the other question could kind of, you know, are we charging enough? I mean, are we charging just enough to, to maintain the facility, which is great before you don't want to be operating under the deficit? Is there a possibility to, you know, get a little more out of the facility for other purposes, like a model? Okay.
Question. So, um. We are actually looking to um do a revamp with our facility fee. Um, because I believe the last time that we did that was around. Two thousand seventeen or eighteen and over that time we've had a lot of um. Increase in salaries in addition to inflation. And so we need our um fee schedule to reflect that. So myself, Gabe and um Liliana will be working on that. This summer. Um, so that our rates are more competitive and try to again. Um, we know we're not going to um, you know, get rich off of uh renting the facility, right? But you at least want to be able to. Um, break even, if not get a little bit more profit because again, it is wear and care. Um, on our facilities, um, as well as we're, you know, we're paying for staff as well, as well as utility to things of that nature. So, yeah, so we're looking to the thing, revamp our fee schedule to try to close uh that gap.
Veronica, that was really garbled. I'm sorry. Can you kind of repeat that? But.
I think, I think I, I got the idea that, you know, the, the goal is to review the. Uh, the charging and make sure that we're going to break even on the services. That's kind of the goal.
As much as possible. I mean, you know, you have to operate inside, which is basically down to like utilities and things like that. But you'll never collect enough to really kind of bank to do replacement, which is one way to do it.
Right, yeah, yeah.
You know, for instance, doing a, a replacement of turf, uh, the turf field, that's a million dollar project. So. It would take you, you know, fifteen years to collapse and operate it to actually replace that and make it a lot actually. But yes, the idea is to collect enough to do the operation up to.
Because right now we got some preview facilities.
Very nice.
You know, you start to, you know, as much as possible for them. Sounds like it's under you, so that's good.
I just want to bring some recognition to the, the interneural sports programs that are about to start at the elementary schools next year. I think this is. Um, you know, there, there's so much talk about the emphasis that we have on secondary and, and I think there's a lot of truth to that. And so I'm really, I'm just really excited to see. That this was, this was at the forefront, um, and something that was being planned. I'm really, really, really excited. Um, that opportunity for those of you that don't know, uh, there will be multiple interneural sports happening at all of the elementary schools next year. Um, some of them are still, you know, some of the details are still being worked out. But thank you, Gabe, uh, for, for really putting that, um, some thought into that. It's really exciting.
Favorite transportation?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so the question just again. Sure. Suzie, here, maybe. Oh, she is okay. Or maybe it probably may be a question to Veronica. I'm sure. I was looking at the, the page seven of the um. Of the report and looking at the, the amount of subsidy that we've had. Um, and looking at the history of it, you know, I mean, Suzie Kelly, the director of transportation has done a great job of, of getting that. Um, the subsidy down to nineteen twenty almost pretty close to zero. And then in uh twenty twenty-one, I see it's bumping back up. And then. When I ask about what does this year look like, it's one ninety-four. My question is. My understanding of the way the state is funding this, and I was looking in the, in the budget bill this year, it says that. For both twenty twenty-one and also for twenty-one, twenty-two. That the state is supposed to, you know, um, make up any subsidy that we have. You know, from, from COVID. So essentially, it seems to me we should be getting back to. Um, the, the level that it was in nineteen twenty before COVID. And I'm curious, I understand that the state is probably not raising these dollars to it. Um, until the end of the year, probably. So we may not be reflected, but um. My question is, yeah, are we really running these subsidies? No.
How about now? Can you guys hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so I have, perfect. So I have not seen a subsidy come through yet. We did get um a little bit um of money back in, um, I believe it was nineteen twenty or early twenty twenty-one, but it was not enough to um. Cover our gap by any means. Um, so I will keep an eye out. I have not heard anything yet. I know that the state doesn't work that fast uh with everything. So again, I will keep my eye out for it, but I have not seen anything yet.
Yeah, I'd really like to know if that doesn't come, because I'm just looking at the budget bill and it says. Student transportation allocation for twenty-one, twenty-two school year equal to the greater of allocation provided in nineteen twenty. For the nineteen twenty school year or the student transportation allocations, you know, calculated. Under the formulas. So whichever is greater, so we should be getting that. And if we're not. Um, I'd really like to, to know about that because it, it sounds to me like that. I believe that was the intent from both years. So. Uh, and it's now, you know, several hundred thousand dollars again. So it's a lot of money. So anyway, yeah, I'd, I'd really like to. Know if we're not getting that. Thanks.
All right. I will keep you posted. Thank you.
I want to go to the next one. McKinnon, the only comment I had on that one was just. Um, I was, I was really impressed with, I've always been impressed with the quality engagement coordinators and how they. You know, pulled together all these, they have a long list of all of the, the community groups that they've worked with to try and, and get support for our. Um, uh, students experiencing homelessness. So it's just a really, another compliment to those uh two on all the work they do to. You know, support our students experiencing homelessness and, you know, this long list of partners and the approach for the citizens. And so great job working with the community on that. So. That was my time.
Other questions? Okay, um, we'll move to our action items. Then we have no, no. Live presentation today, we're with our action items. Um, so the first action item is approval of out of. Endorsement out of grade span teacher plans. Um, so I'll accept a motion to approve this item.
So.
Um, all in favor?
Alright.
Am I supposed to do the discussion first? Is there any discussion? Great, alright, cool. Um, still learning, getting better. Okay, um, approval of the human resources staffing reports.
Okay.
Any discussion? The only, the only question I have is on the, the separations. Are most of those being built in? Are those already listed for? Yeah, so. Um. Okay, that's my question. Sorry, um. Okay, I'm ready for a question. Okay, all in favor to approve of this item?
Alright.
Alright, so next, uh, actually I didn't see approval of out of state travel for the NCCP annual gear up conference.
Uh huh.
Uh, any discussion? Alright, all in favor? Um, and then lastly, accident of ninety, approval of out of state travel for the NCCP leadership side. Any discussion?
So, um, I assume you don't study trial and supervising the meat for a child. Is that correct?
Yes, they will have supervision. Uh, we have the two students and then the, the. Uh, two adults. So, yeah, they'll be supervised by them.
Okay. Do you think there are any problems? I'm just curious, how do you? Safety with that?
Yes, I believe so. Um, but I have, I would not be getting that specific.
Think the bigger the kids around, the kids around schools, right?
Um, probably not. In this case, either, I don't think, um, it is. Um, there's a little bit of that in all requests. That would look like they would be better.
As for the other kinds of these, it'd be, it'd be great to hear back from what the, what the students and the staff learn, you know, it doesn't need to be. Like it's a fancy presentation, but you know, a quick note on things they were and things that we should be aware of and that's what works.
Especially because we mentioned you're a, in a preview. And I'm just, I just, I don't think they're.
Any other questions or instructions? Okay, all in favors?
Hi.
Alright, that seems approved. Um, okay, that brings us to. Our second opportunity for public comments. So again, if you're uh joining us via Zoom, you can raise your hand and type your name in the chat. Um, anyone here would like to present some public comment?
Do you have a public comment, Stephanie?
I just want to make a comment that um I spoke to a lot of math teachers last Friday and then I specifically talked to an algebra one teacher. And they love to have community of monetizing, classifying. That's what I want. And.
Yeah, that's, that was one of the high things. So I'd better hear that.
Alright, if there are no initial public comments, um, then we will momentarily move into our executive session. Which is to review the performance of a public employee for RCW four two dot three zero dot one one zero G. Um, so at this time, we'd like to ask everyone to um leave. Thank you so much for being here. Um, Zoom.
How long?
Oh, how long? Um. An hour, I think? Um, let's. I don't think you guys are going to have to.
I know, because you're bad.
I know, John. Hi, Rob. Let's say, let's say eight forty-five. So it's, that's like an hour and nine minutes. To make it simple. No, is that, that's not simple? Okay, an hour. We'll go with an even hour.
I'm going to put approximately.
It doesn't mean that we already stop and.
Yeah. Okay. So. Anyone who is left on Zoom, I'm sorry, but I will be. Removing you from the meeting as this is an executive session.
I don't know what that did to you.
Um.
He did. I saw it up.
Oh, yeah, please. I have my stuff all over here, here, and it has some, you know. Um, I didn't find this out, but I think.
Oh. Yeah, we're still recording.
Come on.
Okay, did you go to panelists yet?
Okay.
Okay.
Unpause and then unpause the owls.
I don't know if you have to do the same yet. There you go.
Okay.
Oh.
Feel free.
Okay, um, just informing, uh, coming back on to inform everyone that we are extending our executive session for an additional thirty minutes. And we'll be back at nine fifteen. We'll accept a motion to adjourn our meeting. So moved.
Certainly.
Any objections? All in favor?
Nine twenty-five PM.
Right on.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody.